I'd like to call the board to the council workshop of March 6, 2023.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Appreciate it. I'd like to go down tonight.
Vice Mayor Dan.
Here.
Captain Meninsky.
Here.
Captain Romanovich.
Present.
Seat one is vacant, and Captain Maldonca is not present tonight. Dan Smith, the ordinance officer. Dan?
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Park.
Here.
Julie Denasty-Rockers Park.
Yeah.
Matt Hudley.
Here.
Here.
Chief McQuaid. Chief McQuaid is here. And Corinna.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall bulletin board on Monday, February 27, 2023.
Okay. Now we'll have public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes if anybody has signed up before the meeting.
I have people signed up for the beginning of the meeting, but it's actually for a particular agenda item. So other than that, I don't have anyone, and I don't have anyone on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Then we don't have any public comments to start with. Okay. Now we'll move on to board reports. They have a board report. Chamber?
I'm not.
Oh, you're the next one. I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
I haven't even reported our last meeting's conference.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. Now, the Chamber of Commerce. Business Association Report.
Hello. We have a few new members. We have Art Point Labs and Unicorn Collaborations, and we have some events coming up as well. We have the Acrylic Four and More at Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from one to four, and the cost for that is $65. On March 8, we have the Photoshop Basics 102 from three to five at Rainbow Springs Art. The cost for that is $75. On March 10, we have a sewing class at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op, and the cost for that is $45. On the 14th, we have another acrylic four in more at Rainbow Springs Art from one to four. The cost is $65 for that. On March 18, Rainbow Springs Art, we have the Rainbow Springs Art Festival from nine to five on Pennsylvania Avenue and Cedar Street in downtown Dunellen. On the 22nd, March 22, we have Watercolor Wednesday Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from eight to five, and the cost is $10. On that same day, on the 22nd, we have the annual DCBA Awards banquet at the Back Forty Barn at 6:00 PM, and the tickets are $30 for members, $30 for members, and $35 for non-members. March 23, we have the Spring Basket at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from 11:30 to 3:30, and the cost is $50. April 1 is the first Saturday market in the park at Ernie Mills Bar from nine to two, and the vendor sponsor $20. I did forget to add something, but I'll just add something really quickly. The March 14 is also the day of our DCBA Board Meeting at 6:00 PM at the Chamber. Okay? And that's it?
Oh, I have one question. I know there was a little haggle up on the streets. I noticed you said Pennsylvania and at Cedar.
Oh, for the Art Co-op Art Festival. That's what was on there.
Are we going to be able to block off this lane?
Um, I know we can. We moved down. I don't, I don't know about the art festival. You know, I got permission from the county to move down. So, I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number four, Southern Springs, opposed RV Park Conceptual Site Plan Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Rogers with Rogers Engineering in Ocala. I didn't know if we, we have a plan available to put up. There you go. This is a 30-acre parcel that's immediately west of the Methodist Church on 40. North is pointing to your left, as you would see the north there. Get oriented with it. Property was previously zoned PUD by the previous owner. They had a slightly different layout in their plan. They, they had smaller lots. They had a lot more lots than this, this park does. I think we have 30-something less lots, but we have larger RV sites, is what they're called. They're not really lots because it's all owned by one person. The developer of this property has done several RV parks and has been in the business for quite a while, and they've all been very upscale, nice, successful parks. These are not the typical weekend type of parks. They're probably 20, 25% full during the summer and then 100% full during the winter months. So they're primarily looked ahead of time. Most of them are retirees that are trying to get out of the freezing cold and come down here and stay through the winter. They do bring a lot of commerce to the town that they're in because, you know, they don't cook hot dogs every night out there. So they go eat, out to eat, and they go, they go shopping, and they, and they, you know, interact with, go to the churches in the, in the town and things like that. So they kind of, this is their winter home. And so it's set up as a destination type of a park. And mimicking the approved, the, the plan that was done by the previous owners when the property was zoned PUD, there's elements of the PUD code that we made sure we stayed with. You know, being the, the buffering that's around the, the site and what type of buffers they were, we provided the same buffers that were, that were shown on the other plan. There's also some criteria for institutional use and a certain percent it needs to be, and commercial use and a certain percent that needs to be, and then the residential slash RV site and a certain percent that needs to be within. So we've been diligent in the design of this to comply with those percents. And we also were, you know, we, we've taken this a little further than the previous owner did. We've, we've done a topographic survey. We've done soil tests. We've located the trees on the property, which there's not very many because this was planted pines primarily before they timbered it. So there's a few trees on the property. But we just wanted to introduce this to the council tonight as this was the plan for us to move forward. And, you know, the next step for us is to spend some serious time and money permitting this with Swift EP, FGUA, and the city. And just wanted to see if there was any reason the council could see or any questions you may have about it before we proceed down this, this next route, which is a big, major undertaking.
Yes. How many sites again?
230.
230. Can you point out where your entrance and your exit is going to be?
Do you have a pointer?
The entrance is, you see the round circle to the right?
Here.
Yes, right there. You come in, it's kind of like a little roundabout right there that can circle around in case somebody comes in there and they, they're not supposed to be there or they're at the wrong place, they can traumatically go back out. So it's dead center of the park is where the entrance is, on the frontage right there. And then that center area there is where the community center building is. There's pickleball courts and a swimming pool. There's a dog walk park, that kind of thing. It's the central area. The middle area just to the north or just up from that is the general store, office, postal station, postal work, things like that, for receipt packages from Amazon. And the area up in this corner that goes up there, that's going to be the RV storage area where people can leave their RVs for a feed and just can store them up in that area there. And then the rest of the park is the sites.
So this is coming off the highway forward where that circle is.
Right.
All right.
And there's, we've got one with FGUA, and we'll be extending their sewer and the water lines out to serve this property.
Is there a laundromat on site?
Yes, ma'am.
How many bathhouses?
There's two.
Two. Where are they going to be?
One will be where the, there's a little small building in that central area to the, to the left. If you can kind of see it, it's right there. There you go. That's one of the, one in the office over there also. There's some state regulations where it goes about bathhouses in the city. So pools, pools, you know, that have, so centralized, but not a bathhouse.
And then this down at the bottom, that's just a DRA, right?
That's a greater jurisdiction. That's the natural water.
Right. And then up there, you're saying you'll store RVs.
That's the RV boat storage area right there, and that's the commercial element of the site. Now, I will go on to say that these owners aren't in the business of storing RV boat storage, but your code says that we have to have so much percent of commercial, and that's a logical commercial use in our ideal park. But if council said we don't own RV boat storage, we'd be happy to put sites there that are RV boat storage.
Let me ask something. Is it the owner's intention to put any kind of fencing along 40, especially around where you're talking about storing these RVs?
Well, the, all, all down the front of it is going to have like a four-board horse fence down front with landscaping in front of the fence. Okay? The whole 30-foot area will be landscaped, okay? And where the RV and boat store is behind the four-board fence, they will have a chain link fence for security purposes so people don't break in there to steal out their RV or something. But that, that whole frontage will have a nice looking fence. You can see kind of the fence, how it comes in around the gates with columns and things like that, around the roundabout where it comes into the entrance there. So it'll be landscaped the full length of 40 along the front in front of the fence there.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the folks doing this, somebody told me they thought it was the same folks that had one of these up in Williston?
Yes.
Point Williston, Gainesville?
Yes.
And I drive by that one all the time, and it's a real nice.
That's the same people.
Yes, that's, that's a real, if anybody wants to go look at it, that's a real nice RV park.
Well, you, you attract real nice people in a real nice park. These aren't the kind of parks that turn into where they live year-round there. And they got their clothes hanging out. They got restrictions in there. You can't hang your clothes out on the paint line. You can't leave your barbecue grills out and bicycles laying around and things like that. It's, it's a hiding park, you know?
So you kind of let into, kind of led into one of my questions. Are state times limited?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of the ladies asked me, and we've told me that y'all didn't allow RVs over 10 years old. Was that a regulation?
What you, what you do allow older 10 years olds, they've been approved by management. If it's a good-looking RV and is in good shape, then yes, we allow older RVs. But if it's an old.
That's only putting rotation on.
We're not, we're not going to let them in the gate.
Got it.
Management going to live on site? We have work campers or how is that going to?
No, we have managers live on site. And it's a, it's a, at nighttime it beats you up. It's not a 24-hour open door type thing, you know? And so even though the, the pool area and all that is available to the public to use, they don't, they're going to regulate the time. Like after dark, that's not no more of that. Is these, these folks going to bed early? They don't, you know, sure, they're not a late night. They may have a fish fry or a bean dough at 5:30 or something like that or whatever, but it's not a, you know, a nighttime type of place. The lighting in these parks, it's no more than a little push lamp at the six, about six foot, you know, so often around the park just for security purposes. So they want to, want to walk around, but it's not like a subdivision with the big LED lights in regular street light type lights.
Sure. Any limit? Who's going there if they can?
Hey, it's not a restriction of that.
I think study. When I see 230.
We will, we will, we will give you the, we'll give you the peak hour trips that is anticipated for, and I was looking in your code to see what, what would trip that to do with traffic impact analysis. And, but we will address that on the full set of plans, and if the traffic studies need, we'll certainly do that.
Because I tell you where I'm looking at is 40 is also goes right through, right through our downtown. And the only other option is, well, coming from the east, the only other option is a Powell Road. And I don't see either one of those being conducive for 230 RVs coming through.
Well, you've got to understand, RVs, they, they, they come in slowly at a time, and then they're there, and then they leave slowly at a time. The, the major amount of trips out here is from a passenger car that they pull along the height. They don't, there's not 230 RVs coming in from this place. They, they all come in around Easter, and it'll be full.
Right.
And the only trips coming and going from there will be in passenger cars. And then they'll all start later day, migrate out of there. And then, but, but it is not a, I'm just surprised how much, there's not a lot of RV traffic.
Okay.
Going in and out of the park at all.
Gotcha.
All right. Appreciate it. Anybody else got any questions?
Yeah.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to you moving on.
Thank you. You are too. Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, here's a little Michael, Michael Williams Rankin, Andy Parker, LPG Urban. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, staff, and audience. For the record, my name's Michael Rankin. Actually, I go by Mike. I don't know why in the world I put Michael William Rankin on there. I think my grandmother was the only one that ever called me that. I knew why, so. But I'm, I'm here to the service to the community. I own LPG Regional Land Planning Group in Lake County. We are land planners for Mineola, for Humatola, and Fruitland Park. In addition to, we do a lot of private development as well. We approached Andy with the idea of coming in as a consultant to handle your land planning. In fact, we've already started on a couple of projects. One was giving an opinion on a shed. The other one we're working on is a coffee, private coffee venue. The other one is the medical building. And then most recent, a gentleman in my card, the RV park. So we've already started reviewing. We tend to, in fact, tomorrow, Mandy will get a draft of the observation we have on the RV park, and then that will convert into a staff report that we will then present, give you guys a heads up where we're going. We like to make sure our clients know what our thoughts are, what our concerns are as we move forward with the staff report. We attend meetings in public. I'll hide behind the phone. I'll hide behind Zoom. We come in public. So if I need to be here, I'm here. If any of you have a question, I've got plenty of cards. My cell phone's on there. And my grandfather always said that the dumbest question is the one that's never asked. So, you know, if there's any questions that you may have on development, I'd be more than happy to help. So we'll handle your plan review. Sure like to take a look at your comp plan someday and also look at some of the rates that you have. I think Dunellen has an outstanding opportunity for the growth that you want to see come to the area. We just want to make sure the type of growth that's coming is the growth that fits your needs and follows the rules. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions they have.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Nor I. Mandy discussed a couple of times. Sounds like everything so far is working out real well. Gotcha.
I was going to say, if y'all talk to Mandy, then we understand your, your business and what you're doing. I'm so glad you're here to kind of help us keep this stuff moving because.
Honored to be here.
We've got a lot of things, I think, that are going to be moving, and we need some help out there.
Not to delay your meeting, but I've been doing this for 28 years. Prior to buying this company, two and a half, three years ago, wow, I was the deputy city manager for Leesburg. Before that, I was up in that state called Missouri, but I was the deputy city manager for Lees, for Branson, Missouri, and my last project, there was a Branson landing. I've also overseen airports. I used to be a building official in the state of Missouri. Obviously, various aspects of government. But privately, my wife and I own an antique store in the area, and we own businesses elsewhere. So I get both sides of the coin. I understand the needs of follow the rules, and I also understand the challenge that small businesses have when it comes to following business. So.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. So much. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Six. You going to handle it?
I'll make it short and sweet. We have one application for the vacant seat one, and that would be our Vice Mayor, Wally Dunn.
Oh, that's what you were going to say. All right. And we will have, I guess, that final discussion in the next meeting when the rest of y'all are here.
Well, we can place it on the council meeting agenda for next week for council to make the appointment.
Right. Okay. And that leads me to a second one. Then, Andrew, I'm going to ask you, how soon can we start advertising for this seat? Seat four, I mean, probably not till after I take the other seat, right?
Well, there's a lot of discretion when it comes to council, to what you all want to do. And so I suppose it's really not so much of a legal matter, but more of a matter of prudence. If, if the seat's not vacant yet, there's no reason to advertise it. So that would make the most sense logically. But if it's anticipated, and of course, it doesn't want to appear a foregone conclusion until there's a vote. So that probably makes the most sense. By the same token, if you want to encourage applications for seats and have a running tab, I mean, you never know when something is going to happen. So taking applications from folks that might be interested in to try to get ahead of the game, that's fine, too. Ultimately, you know, there's not really a, a big set of rules here, other than that if there's a vacancy, you've got two options, and you have, you know, a wide area discretion how you want to receive and filling those seats.
Right. And, and that, that's my concern, is how fast we manage this. I mean, I know I've got to be in seat one, and so somebody's got to sit in seat four, because we've got some pretty important things that I'm concerned about. Until we have a full council, I don't want to really sue it, because whatever we do, I want to make sure we all air this really on the conservative side and make sure we got five people sitting here. So I guess me and you, based on that, probably shouldn't do anything until after Wednesday meeting. But then as soon as we can start advertising, first Friday, we need to. That would be my guess.
Sure. So once the appointment's made on Wednesday, we can, on Thursday, immediately get it posted to the website. We, I doubt we'll be able to get into Riverland News that, because their, their deadline is earlier in the week. And, but we could get it on the website, get it on our Facebook page, and get it in the Riverland the following week.
And hopefully that will go smoothly, and we'll have a fifth member by the, the following month as well. And anybody in the audience that's interested in taking a position on this board of this council, I would encourage you to fill out an application, because I think it's very critical for us here at Dunellen to, you know, have a good representation of the people. All right. Next item, number seven, SECO Energy Letter. Oh, that's.
So I pulled up the email that we received.
Right.
And they're asking for a letter of support for this grant.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see here, it's over $70 million. And I'll hit these bullet points. The conversion of almost 15 miles of electric utility lines from overhead to underground, upgrade 47 miles of utility poles, the steel poles convert approximately 3.3 miles of existing conductors to larger ampasse, epcity, conductors, and rebuilding or upgrading and expanding six substations. This is Seco Electric. They don't actually service the city limits of Dunellen, but they service outside the city. And they're just asking for letters of support from all the multiple government agencies in the area. So I do have a, a sample letter that I sent you all to look at, and so just would need for council to have a consensus that, you know, you want to do this, and we could prepare the letter on the letterhead and have it for the Vice Mayor or Mayor's signature.
Y'all have any questions about that?
No questions, other than I believe the city sits, should support this project because it's not too far out of the city, heading out 41 at Seco Utilities are used by everybody up that way.
Right. Exactly. Tim, you got any thoughts?
No, sir, I don't. I read it. I understand it. I'm good with it.
I read all this, and to me, the, you know, first thing I was concerned about, are we having to pay anything? And we're obviously not. I think they want us to recommend them. I don't know much about them, but has anybody else approached us about doing this?
I don't have a problem with this.
All of Rainbow Lakes Estates, Lake Tropicana, those are our shoppers. Those are our people.
I'm going to say the fact they're all around us. Duke Power is right here, but they're all around us. I don't see a downside to doing this. Anything we're getting at at Duke, maybe they couldn't help us.
Yep.
But.
Maybe, maybe they'll help us with the grant someday.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Do you folks want to put this on the agenda for next Wednesday to have a vote? Julian in the back?
Yes, sir.
And was there an consent?
Yes.
It's fine with me.
Consent?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. And Julian will be backing it. If she doesn't like it, she can take it off the consent. Okay. Okay. Dunellen High School Contribution Request. Is anybody from Dunellen High School here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I know we've discussed contributions. I think we had a couple of requests there. It seemed like back-to-back for different things, and we pretty much rejected them. My personal opinion about this is I still don't. My personal opinion about this is, I still don't think the city should be in the business of making charitable contributions. However, the fact, we're talking about Dunellen High School, which in essence is tied back to our city, I don't see problems. I just don't. I'm sorry. When the churches come to us, or one regular town, or some of these other organizations, I don't think that's what our business is. But to me, if the schools here approach us about making a contribution, I don't have a problem. And it's what, $250?
$250 or something like that.
Okay. I'll be the Grinch. I think we should stick, I don't think that we should be deciding to give taxpayer dollars for charitable reasons. I think we should hold it on that. And my other, here comes the Grinch comment. Taxpayers have already paid for a building and grounds for graduation, the high school. If somebody, if others want something more extravagant, okay, then they should be the ones going out, you know, going to work for it and getting the funds. And that's, I'll stop there.
My comment is, having spent 18 years over at Dunellen High School, I know that some of this money is afforded to those students who have, because of economic difficulties at home. Those gowns have to be purchased, the caps and so on, by the student. It's a rental of your gown. It costs money, like $25 for the rental for the night, whatever. I firmly believe we should donate $250.
Okay. And...
It's not $250,000, it's not $25?
I understand what it is, okay. So here's kind of where I'm at. So the last thing these students are gonna learn, as they get their graduation diplomas, is if they want something extravagant, don't go out and get a job to pay for what they need. And there's one job signed after another that, out there to get work.
The job of some of those students is to take care of their siblings while their moms at work. They have a job.
They can, they can go out and they can get a job, okay, like the rest of us did, and earn the money for it, rather than learning to go after the taxpayers for something extravagant. They already have a building, they already have grounds. And I do not think it is our place up here to decide that tax dollars go to any charitable whatevers.
This is Dunellen School, okay? See the tiger at the top? We're tigers. Maybe you're a newbie in town, but most of everybody else here has been here quite a while. And I think $250 is a very trivial amount.
Here's what I think we need to do. I think we need to put in the, Julianne gets back. It's either gonna be 3-1, it's gonna be 2-2, and if it's 2-2, a dive, a bid end of. But I think we just, it should consent, but we just need a vote.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. All right. And of course, anybody who wants to make their own contribution there, welcome to do so. Next thing is, the ServiceMaster Professional Services Renewal.
Yes. So we currently have an agreement with ServiceMaster to clean the restroom at City Beach once a week, these restrooms at the boat ramp seven days a week, and City Hall once a week. And we just really received an updated quote from them. As it turns out, apparently, they were grossly underbilling us and had grossly underquoted us. For all of that, we were only paying $630 a month for seven days a week down here, once a week at City Beach, and once a week at City Hall.
So they weren't doing earnings per square, right?
No. So when I got the quote, until it was brought to my attention, I didn't realize that, when you broke it down by an hourly rate, I mean, they were losing money. But I heavily questioned it, because it doubled. It went from $630 a month to $1,250 a month. So I went back and forth with them a little bit, and said, wait a minute, you know, and I really don't know what their methodology is when they're establishing these fees, but they sent me an updated rate sheet. And what Matt and I have talked about is retaining them still to come and clean City Hall once a week, but his guys taking over the City Beach, because we're gonna have someone at City Beach four out of five, four out of seven days of the week anyway, so whoever's down there can clean that restroom every day. And then Matt also made a very good suggestion to adjust their hours. Come in at 7:30 and work until 6:00, and that way, between 5:00 and 6:00, these guys can clean Ernie Mills and the bathrooms every day, and not have to come in and get overtime for that. So Ernie Mills Restrooms, the ramp restrooms. And then there's a breakdown of what the proposed was, and I broke it down to a daily rate, too. So to come and clean City Hall once a week, it'd be $455 a month, which is $5460 a year, which equates to $105 a day. And they, they say they're here for about four hours when they come on Fridays. And then the boat ramp would be $8475 a year. They said it takes about an hour fifteen, an hour and a half to clean those down there, same at City Beach. So we could save almost $10,000 a year just cutting it back to City Hall and letting Public Works take care of the parks. So I would propose to council that we put this on the agenda. You want it on the regular agenda, it doesn't matter. And I'll have them, actually, I had them send me a word doc of the agreement, and we'll just take everything out except for City Hall. That works for you.
Just for me, because Matt, y'all still lock in those bathrooms with certain hours of the day?
Yes, sir. We open them up at 7:30 in the morning and close them at 6:00 P.M. When we were coming in at 6:30 in the morning and leaving at 5:00 at night, we had to pay a guy a time and a half to close the bathrooms, stay an hour late. So that's why we changed it from 7:30 to 6:00. But the last hour will come down, or the crew will come down and clean the boat ramp and Ernie Mills, and make sure all the facilities are, you know, secure and safe.
Uh-huh. I'm all for that. I don't know if you can get it done, you choose to, just having somebody come do it.
It does not take an hour and a half to clean the City Hall, boat ramp slash bathrooms. It takes about, when it was COVID, and we had to sterilize everything from top to bottom, it took us about 35, 40 minutes. Right now, it's all concrete, sprayed down with garden hose, this effective, blow it out with a blower, shut the doors, and by morning, it's all dry. Park at City Beach, the Dickens Park, like you said, Mandy was saying, from Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we have each 10 minutes down there anyway. And on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're in and out of City Beach anyway. And it's all concrete, washed out with garden hose. It takes maybe 30 minutes for the two baths. So we are saving, like Mandy said, about $10,000 just doing that. And plus, the overtime that we're spending per week every day.
And you got to do that, too. Right, okay. Awesome. I don't have a problem with doing City Hall and taking the other one, giving it back to Matt. Do y'all have any thoughts?
No, I think it's an outstanding idea. Thank you both.
Yeah, $10,000. Plus, you know, I just... That sounds good to me. Okay. Well, let's put it on the Senate end of...
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you. All right. Now, this wonderful inter-local agreement. I noticed that Mandy and Jan Covage were on the committee that went through all this wonderful thing. Would y'all like to discuss it?
Every seven years, State of Florida requires that the school boards of every county speak with the local towns about culminating student growth numbers. Right now, Marion County's at 45,500 students, which is 1,000 students over what we projected last year. Our area isn't as much affected. Most of the growth is along I-75 corridor in town, amount of apartment complexes, duplexes, and so on, within city proper of Ocala and Bellevue. So basically, this is about providing schools that meet population, growing population of students. So pretty much Dunellen is not in the picture. Dunellen High School is at max right now, but largely, the new students that are coming in are at elementary school grade levels, and there is a need right now for two new elementary schools.
Two?
Two, okay? Two at a cost of $5 million each. I'm sorry, $50 million each. Okay, that's what they're looking at. And again, this does not affect Dunellen, but the rest of the county, you know, it's full speed ahead on development right now, until our county commissioners decide to, you know, put up some kind of moratorium block, step back. How are we gonna build these, how are we gonna build these schools and so on, so...
But our schools, you think, are, our schools here in Dunellen?
Our schools are at max right now, but the growth of the county is not here, so nothing, nothing really, within this inter-local agreement affects Dunellen schools.
Okay. I don't have any questions, do you have any?
No, sir.
You're good? Okay.
And Sam?
I think we put this on consent for the end, if somebody needs to sign something. Put my name on it. Okay. All right. Ray, we're talking. Kayak launches.
Kayak launches.
That's the other Jan.
Oh, that's the other Jan. I always forget that.
It's about money.
All right, hold on, I think we'll do five. All right. That's right. It says, Jan Smith, Florida Boaters Improvement Grant Program Requires Kayak Launches. Jan Covage, I mean, Jan Smith. Okay.
What is it, Jan?
Yes, council, I was asked to bring back a list of requirements for this grant, and so that's what I presented before you. We've got required attachments, authorization for whoever is authorized to sign the grant, which we do have in our charter, I guess it is, authorizing the mayor to sign documents. We have to have site control documents, deed, lease, anything that proves that we, the city does own this area back here, a boundary map, photographs, detailed cost estimate, which I did receive, navigational chart, and the most important is permits.
The what?
Permits. We have to have those in hand. The only way to get permits is to have a design. This is a bit to Florida Fish and Wildlife, and there are like three, there are three agencies. SwiftMud, Army Corps of Engineers. Now, Kim Lee Horn, Councilwoman Covage, and Troy and I, we met with the gentleman from Easy Dock. And Troy has, had kind of laid out a design for back here to mainly take the kayakers out of the flow of traffic, because they take the longest to unload and load. So he contacted Kim Lee Horn to see if they could help us do a design for back here and get the permits. I will bring back in April an IPO for Kim Lee Horn to do this project. We do have a year. This grant is available every year. We're not gonna be applying for it this year because of the requirements. But now, we have to put out the money for Kim Lee Horn. I don't know what the cost is right now. It would be budgeted. But we can use this as, to go toward points for the grant, or we get the grant to reimburse us for this. Points are hard to come by. There's a lot of competition. I know which way I would talk to you about, but it's entirely up to council, what you would want to do. But we cannot go forward with this grant without Kim Lee Horn's help in obtaining the permits. And I'm told, permits don't expire. So, right, so if we go for the grant, we're not awarded next year, we do it again. Now, I would probably need another detailed cost estimate, but I think that might be easy enough to get. I will tell you, the estimate that came in was $70,000 just for the boat ramp, the kayak ramp.
The kayak ramp.
Right. Not to design this, you know, to asphalt a section of this area back here for the kayakers.
Right.
So, you know, this project is gonna cost a little bit of money, but that's what the grant's for. There is no match, other than, well, even for what Kim Lee Horn will do, we can submit that as part of the cost that we would like to be reimbursed for.
Sure.
So either way, if you're gonna develop this area back here, I think it's a win-win. If you want to leave the area the way it is, then we just don't move forward with this grant.
No, I think we gotta get these kayakers, no offense against them kayakers, we gotta get them off this boating. I come down here very seldom, but one I do. It's just, the boats seem to go fine until a guy comes in with four kayaks and just kind of stops everything. And to me, if we could get them over here on the side and let the boats go, safety, smoothness, the whole thing. And I think eventually, we're gonna have to do it. And if we don't get the grant, we'd do it next year or the next year. But I think we need to go forward with it.
And this grant has been around since at least 2014. They don't give away too many of these grants a year, maybe about 28 a year, give or take. And I'm sure there's, you know, some pretty stiff competition, so I think if we can do this and get everything, you know, lined up, we stand, you know, just as good a chance as anybody else to be awarded.
Well, that's my thought.
Yeah, right now, it's a very popular grant, if you have an ADA compliant system. The reason why is, it's politically a happy face for those people that are involved. We get a letter of support from our, the goal of representative, and I keep forgetting his name, Musa Lee?
Musula.
Thank you. Okay, and so on. And even the VA Center down in Tampa got a grant last year, and it was $70,000. That's the model we were talking about with Bobby Anderson.
And, and the company that we spoke with, we wouldn't be able to sole source that. They are the only ones that provide, if council wants this type of launch, they're the only ones that provide this type of launch. So that would save some money from having to go out to bid. So I think there's, there are several win-wins with this.
Right.
But again, I will present something in April. I'll bring an IPO forward, and you can make your decision.
That sounds good with me. Tim, you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's only a matter of time before we have somebody get hurt down there.
Well, that's, like I said, I've been down there only a couple of times to get my boat in and out. And another night, I was down there putting it back in. While there wasn't somebody hurt, I just kept watching, but it...
Yeah, the other thing is, we're gonna start charging for using that launch. People, people want a better way to get in and out for their money.
Right, exactly. Okay. Jan, keep going.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Discussion of Boat Launch Program, Jan Smith.
A new direction. Do you want an honor box, or do you want a kiosk? And we also really need to start talking about fees.
Yep.
So that's all I'm asking for. I have no new information to present. Hopefully, there's no surprises with this no-cost option. I don't think there will be. But without moving forward and saying, okay, let's do this, what do we gotta do to get it implemented? If... it implemented if you wanna go by way of a kiosk? If not, I need to get started on an honor box because the lead time was four to sixteen weeks.
Right.
And we're looking at April. And what I was thinking was maybe if we could really discuss fees, a resolution could be brought forward to you in April and we could adopt fees. And then just wait on whatever equipment you all decide. But I really need some kind of direction because if we go by way of kiosk, we need to get a contract written up. So if that's the way you wanna go, I can bring forward a contract and possibly a resolution for fees. We already know what you wanna do with fines. That's already in the ordinance.
Right.
But how much do you wanna charge? And, and there's no way of knowing what's gonna cover what we need until we just bite the bullet and say, this is what we wanna start out charging. And you can let that go for one season or a few months. And if you wanna increase it, decrease it, you have that flexibility with a resolution.
Right. That's, that makes the most sense to me to do it that way. Tim, do you have any thoughts on a kiosk versus an honor box?
Yeah. Well, go through the logistics of an honor box, it gets fairly cumbersome for staff to deal with. Kind of remove that. Coming back to what we should charge, my opinion is it's gonna be hard to determine who's local and who's not local. So presently, in the example, we have ten dollars, fifteen dollars for locals, twenty-five for folks that aren't local. How's that gonna get determined? And let alone enforced? The, I think both the fifteen dollars and the twenty-five dollars is, is pretty steep, but it's gotta be, my opinion is, have one rate for everybody. And what we see out there typically is ten dollars for everybody that's around us. A few are at fifteen, but most are at ten. And I think at least, at a minimum, we should ask for an RFQ on the fifty-fifty split with no expenses and then take a look and see what that proposal actually looks like, see if it has any flaws in it, something we don't like about it that doesn't really, that, there may be some hidden expenses that, something like that in there. But myself, I'd like to see what it's gonna look like. And I think at this point in time, it's worth, not only worth, but we need to get something moving because we're gonna start losing a lot of revenue and go that route.
My, my thoughts have been and still remain to go with the honor box. It works for the state parks, it works for our county. I don't know how much trouble it would be for our staff. Things are slowed down there as far as use of the boat launch during the week, so you could empty the box once a week, weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and so on. Basic expense would be, what, two hundred dollars for the box and put up a light pole and a security camera.
The honor box that Marion County uses is a couple thousand dollars.
That's what I was saying.
Couple thousand dollars then.
And enforcement would be hitting us.
Okay, a couple thousand, whatever. But at least we can charge a reasonable fee, what people are used to paying, seven dollars at the county parks for using their launches. And the other thing is, let's start with the honor box, see how much money we're making, and then we would know what kind of money we'd be making with the kiosk, with Safe Park. We have no idea what kind of revenue we're gonna draw in. Start with the honor box, which is cheapest way to go. We don't have to do a split with a company to do the monitoring and so on. And then if it looks like we're making money, then go ahead, next year, two years from now, go ahead and make a deal with the kiosk company.
So you, or with a kiosk?
You know, I'm telling you, I kinda go back and forth, okay? And I'm almost like, which way, which way do we go? And, you know, when I listen to, but I understand that how the honor box has to happen, somebody's gotta go unlock the honor box, somebody has to bring it in here. There has to be a, one person, it's gonna involve two people with staff. One person has to witness the cash coming out, one person has to do the counting and all that of the money. There's no credit for folks, and I guess that would be on the person. It just is not such a big negative, but, you know, it means debit card, credit cards can't be used, that kind of thing. So it's gonna be a total cash transaction and somebody has to count that cash, take that cash, deposit it in a bank, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing that has to be done is, we, same thing, we're gonna have to get a plan for this because we're gonna have to build a concrete pedestal for this and set anchor the honor box to the concrete pedestal and still hope that it doesn't get, somebody doesn't put a truck on it and run off with it, that type of thing. Then there was a lady that got up and spoke in last month's meeting that has a few years experience with honor boxes, and she's cautioned us that we're probably only gonna see fifty percent of the revenue. I know this is public reporting and everything, but hopefully she, gonna tip it while the crook's off. But she said typically fifty percent of the envelopes are empty. They're gonna take, they're gonna rip the tag off the top, stick it in their windshield because the police are simply gonna go by and look for a ticket stub in the window. The police are not gonna have access to the honor box. There's gonna be no way to check and see if there's actually anybody in there. So it sounds like that's gonna be a fifty-fifty split anyways. And, you know, but then I also, like Jan, it's like, okay, maybe that is a good way to get started. See what we get, what we're gonna get in for income, see what the downside of charging for the whole thing is. So to perfectly frank, this does not help, but I'm kinda sitting on the fence.
Can I add one?
Absolutely.
Marion County is changing to kiosks for two of their locations because of theft.
Okay.
I don't know which locations those are, but they are moving forward with kiosks.
That's what bothers me about cash.
Right, right.
I mean, I hate to say it, I don't care how much concrete you pull in the ground.
Right.
You take a big four-wheel-drive truck and pull the whole thing home, you know, and then take all weekend to open it. You know, I agree with you. You know, you start with a box, seems like the simple thing, and when they were throwing out fees to us, it just didn't make sense to use the kiosk. I've almost turned it convoluted around and I think we're gonna start with the kiosk, see what fifty percent's costing us, and if it's just too darn gone much, then go to the other box.
What was the, the fee for startup?
Nothing.
There was nothing?
No fee at all.
It's a no-cost contract, but it is a, I should say, it's a revenue-sharing agreement.
Yes.
But whatever they like, we get half, they get half.
They cover the cost of everything. I'm thinking, and I, I have to clarify this, there may be a cost for like an internet connection.
Right.
Maybe to the city. I don't know. They did say no cost. So, and they're gonna provide the cameras, which will give our police real-time information. Same deal, but no cost other than sharing the revenue.
You know, I, I kinda, like I say, I started with a box, and then when I, when they came back with this zero, I was like, well, let's try this, and if it ends up fifty percent's a whole bunch of money, well, neither can go back the other way. But the fact you got security lines, you got security cameras, it's, it's a kiosk, they put in a credit card, no money, it's done, nobody has to check anything except every so often you probably gotta go down and put some paper in the thing to make sure somebody gets a ticket out of it. I just think that's the way to go, but that's.
Right. I think we should at least get an RFQ, take a look at it, see what the contract would look like.
Right.
And then see if any bugs look like it's in the contract and go from there.
And I, I will.
And what is kind of the standard people are charging for boat launch? Is it ten dollars, fifteen dollars, what is it?
Seven to ten in Marion County.
Correct.
Seven to ten?
Correct.
I'd say we start with ten bucks and just see.
No.
Now, what about the kayak? How are we gonna live?
Same, same thing. It's a launch is a launch.
If you look at it.
By vehicle. I mean, you're charging by vehicle.
Well, that's what I thought.
And they're gonna be using the parking lot, they're gonna be using a restroom, so they're still gonna be using the same amenities as a motorized vessel.
Right.
But it's entirely up to council what you wanna do.
Right. How are we gonna, I'm sorry, Jan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to walk over you.
Oh, no, that's okay.
How are we gonna, we see a car out there in the parking lot or a truck out there in the parking lot, okay, and it happens to have racks on the top, how do we know that they had, that they launched kayaks, that they just didn't park over there? I'm thinking like the overflow parking lot.
You're not gonna.
Not gonna know, right.
You're not gonna know. There's gonna be a certain percentage.
And then you got a camera that hopefully's aimed at the licensed player back the truck or.
Might make, help make them honest.
Yeah, and just say, this is security, whatever. But, you know, again, I started with, let's do the cheapest, but then I kept thinking, you know, why not do the other unless we find out it's just gonna cost us a bunch of money to give them fifty percent? I'd say we go with ten dollars, get the kiosk, and let's do it.
And if we can.
I have one, just one question. The contract that we're talking about with Safe Park, is that an annual contract or are we tied into three years?
No, it would be, I believe, a five-year contract, but we requested a clause that would allow us to terminate for convenience. We just don't like it anymore. We can get out of the contract at any point in time with, I believe it was a hundred and eighty days advance notice. So we're not locked.
So we're not obligated to?
Not for five years, not for three years. If you have it in there one year and this just is not working, sure, we'd have to give a hundred and eighty days notice, but we can get out of it.
Okay.
And that's why we wanna see a contract now to make sure that that language is in.
We got all those, all those caveats in there, for sure.
I would be, I would be agreeable to that then.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, let's move forward, because like I said, we're getting April next month, the things are gonna pick up.
And if we keep the fee at ten dollars, that's reasonable to the public.
Ten, ten dollars for all boaters? Let me see what I can do as far as putting a resolution together.
Okay.
And maybe, you know, in April, I can bring both forward and we can tweak.
Sure.
Okay.
No.
So ten dollars for all vessels and a Safe Park contract. Okay?
Not to muddy this up even.
Hold up, hold up, not vessels, vehicles.
Vehicles.
Because a kayak, my kayak trailer, I could pile five kayaks on it. I don't wanna get charged for fifty dollars.
So you don't wanna charge per kayak?
No, you're charging per train vehicle. Or the vehicle with the rack.
Right, right.
Per vehicle.
It's gonna be, how do we account for five kayaks? How do we say that this person had three kayaks?
Camera.
But we're, I understand that realistically, the chief's not gonna have time, his people are not gonna have time to go look at a camera and figure out if this person had three kayaks or two kayaks.
It's like Kate Keighley, you come in and launch, you pay a fee for your trailer and your boat, doesn't matter how many kayaks you've got piled on it. You're just using the launch, back up, pile up. It's one use of launch.
So really this is.
Not five, if you had five kayaks.
What?
Not a launch fee. Yeah.
Technically, we call it launch fee, but it's technically a launch.
Nah, well, I'm saying it's not a parking fee because you could have somebody that has a kayak, that dropped with kayak racks or dropped, had kayaks in the back. You could, again, I'm looking at the overflow parking lot, you could have somebody else sitting there, okay, from the building that's over there that, that parks in there, all right? The person that's parking there, that's been parking there for the last two years, they are, they're not gonna be paying a fee to use that spot, but the person that used the ramp, you know, will be paying a fee.
Okay, so you have somebody that has two kayaks on top of the car. They only pay one ten-dollar fee?
Yeah.
One ten-dollar ramp usage fee.
It may be hard to, if I may counsel, it may be hard to tag it to, you know, when you're, you're looking, if it's, if it's going to just be launching a vessel, that's easy to keep track of, or that's what people are paying. But if we're looking at trailers or how many somebody can outfit on a particular vehicle, that becomes a bit more difficult. It also adds the additional wrinkle if they don't park on-site because it's technically not parking, it's really not a launch fee, it's a use of the ramp per se, but at the end of the day, if it's on a kayak on top of somebody's vehicle, they're not gonna be backing a trailer into the ramp, they're just gonna be carrying down two, two different people carrying down two kayaks. So somehow it's, it's, it's not, it's kinda convoluting it because we're attaching everything to a vehicle, but not charging for parking. So I'm having a little bit of, it doesn't mean it can't be done, but I'm having a little bit of a difficult time constructing how that could be charged for and differentiating when it's all tied to a, a vehicle. You know what I mean? Like a transportation vehicle.
No, over in a.
If they walk their kayaks down, if they park here and walk the kayaks down, which they do, some people do.
Right.
How do you charge them?
How do you charge them if the kidnapper hasn't captured their vehicle tag?
And that is something that I've wrestled with and I've gone back and forth with, when it gets that convoluted, about the only way that that's really gonna be captured is as if we have an attendant down there that's gonna take a body.
That's right.
So that's gonna be a cost. And then what I ended up weighing out in my own mind was the few people that are not gonna end up paying, okay, we're not gonna be losing so much money on them as we are gonna have to spend on an attendant. In, in Citrus County over in the Homo Sassafrum ramp and in the, at the, at their county park heading on the Ford Island Trail, there are signs up, you know, it's the same, similar to the same program we're looking at now. You go on, I mean, that's the online thing, the whole thing is online. You go online, you know, put your credit card number in, and you don't get a ticket or anything, but we don't wanna go that route, it's too cumbersome for the police to enforce. But it states that it's, that on the sign it says, you may park, a car will not be ticketed just for parking into the, if a car is parked in that parking lot, that they won't, they won't receive a fine unless they use the ramp. So when you go to that parking lot, you will have paid, people that have paid to use it, you will have somebody parked in the spot right next to them that have no trailer or anything, and they do, they do not pay and are not fined.
Okay, I mean, it's whatever you all wanna do, you know, we'll try and, and, you know, enforce what we can and, you know, we know, we recognize that there's gonna be a percentage that we lose.
Right.
But hopefully not too much. Now, do you wanna charge everybody ten dollars?
I don't see.
By vehicle.
Correct.
So the commercial enterprises that use this, are they allowed to use? Are kayak places allowed to?
Oh, that's right, they do.
Okay. How many, how many kayaks are on their trailer?
A lot.
Okay, just good for a.
Yeah, like Kate Keighley buses, I mean, they come in here and that's where a lot of the kayaks get out, but they come all the way this far.
Oh, absolutely.
And throw them in the back of that big, that big thing.
Let me throw this out. What if you charge the kayakers a lower, lower price? It's not by vehicle, it's per vessel, and it's maybe a lesser price, I don't know. Is that discrimination?
It may be. The typical way that, you know, what we're seeing with Citrus County and so forth is just a ten-dollar fee for launching a watercraft, and then you don't have to worry about the vehicle, you don't have to worry about everything else. It does create the issue of having multiple small vessels, but on the same token, those are piloted by different individuals, you know.
So that would be, if a family of four, having four kayaks, forty dollars.
That's not, that's not, it's.
That's what it would amount to. But that's what Citrus County is doing, correct?
And one thing I did witness when I went over to Citrus County, when we were looking at the park at Ford Island Trail and just monitoring the coming and going, another example is you had a trailer with two jet skis on it. They only paid one launch fee, boat jet ski.
Right.
Look, what happens with the county is, okay, what are we gonna do with those commercial vendors? Well, the county has their license, okay? You have to pay the county a user fee. So we know. So, we know who the commercial vendors are, the people who shuttle and so on. We know who they are, then we need to go to them and say, hey, we're going to charge you this much. Okay, but for a family to come in and they got, you know, four kids and two adults, now you're talking $60? No.
No.
Yeah, that, that may be the solution, is, is you come in, your own car or you've got a trailer and you've got a couple of kayaks at the one time. You go through a commercial vendor, we just agree with them, a certain fee, we get a month. And you can come in here as many times as you want to.
And Crystal River does have, uh, agreements with, um, kayak, uh, companies over in, in Crystal River. I'm, uh, Troy and I met with the city manager over there a few months back to see how that worked. And, um, so they have like, you know, um, agreements with multiple, uh, people. They let them set up at, uh, Hunter Springs and, um, they just pay a, you know, a fee to the city.
I mean, to me, it would benefit kayak people, bring the buses in, pick them up. It, I hate to say it this way, but it would also relieve this parking lot of having 10 people bringing their boats down here on one car, have 10 parking places. I don't want to say, you know, you, you up here, got all these tubes and kayaks, you pay us a fee, you just come get them, get them out of here and then you park in your place. You know, that actually frees us up a lot of parking.
Right, right. And now that you mentioned it, Jan, also, the other thing with the kayak vendors is, I'm going to say probably high 90%. They are removing kayakers, they are not putting kayakers.
Oh, but they all get in it, they be all they get out down here.
Right, yeah, okay.
So, they're only doing half of it. But if we worked out a deal with them, I mean, I wouldn't care if they even advertised, bring your kayaks here and I won't charge you but X to put it in, you don't have to pay that. I mean, it gets, defeats us, but again, we only have limited parking.
Right, right.
And I just sent the use of boats and a bunch of kayaks. But that's, no. I still think $10 is a real.
Okay, so, if I hear my marching orders correctly, a resolution for $10 per, per vessel. However, I'll look to, um, see what kind of draft agreement we can have in place for commercial operators. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I don't. And wait a minute, are we looking at $10 per vessel? It's $10 per kayak.
It would be, yeah, that would be $10.
If, if they come in here and take a parking lot and launch a kayak. Well, what I'm saying is, if they go down the road there and put it in the KP hole and that guy picks them up, you know, he going to pay us a fee once a month, and it's not going to be a bunch of money.
Right.
I hate to say this, we have to split that with the kiosk people?
Yeah.
That would be a separate agreement, I would.
Right, right.
It would be a.
We get all of that money.
We're not using their kiosks.
Well, see, that's why, they're not using the kiosks, they pay us, they don't use the kiosks. We free up parking places and.
Okay, because it is, right. But, again, we have a family of three show up, okay, with three kayaks, you know, do you want to charge them $30?
Well, if I can read the road.
No, I'm with you, but.
Well, let me, let me see, you know, how much, um, Crystal River's agreements are for.
Okay.
And whether we have the same dollar amount or something in between, you know, that we can discuss. I'm not sure all of this is going to be in place for April and maybe not, maybe not even for May, but, and, but this is a way for us to get started in the future.
And this is just suggesting, but even if we can't capture everything, we can't capture all the kayaks, we can't do all that. We can at least get moving with boats and start getting some revenue coming in.
And we'll take up the most.
Right, we can come up with some numbers for, for kayaks that, you know, whatever, and, um, uh, and change that at a later date when we have more information. Now, to make this even more complicated, uh, right, uh, I really hate charging the local people that use that ramp a lot, $10 per time. I see a lot of these older folks that fish every single day, going back to, these people have been here even longer than you, Jan, um, and they fish and that is their life. And you can tell these people by their boats and stuff, they do not have a lot of money. So, um, I have a hard time with charging these.
Some agreement where they get an annual pass.
And that's what I was coming up with. You know, probably need to think about an annual pass for the local folks.
Okay, while I'm doing this, um, resolution, what are you thinking for an annual pass? Dollar amount?
Now, it, uh, I know Citrus County is, um,
$25.
$25 for locals. Okay, and I'm not, you know.
KP hole's $45. Okay, now, we're only going to offer residents an annual pass, not, non-residents.
Correct.
Okay, so, residents?
I mean, I'm saying correct.
No, I, that makes sense, I mean. And I'm like you, there are some people go down there every day. Some of those kayak people though, go down there, but I see.
Right, and I'm not stuck on the $25. You know, that $25 was a few years ago, when they first enacted, somebody thinks, you know, that's more reasonable.
We could, we could do 50. I mean, that opens up every day of the year, and 360, take, we, 365, buy it into 50, and it's pennies.
Right.
A day. Um, if you want to start out with that, um, you can. If you want to start out with less, you all let me know exactly what you'd like to do.
I have a question. Andrew, um, we have first reading, uh, we have final reading of the ordinance on next Wednesday. Does that ordinance address a commercial aspect at all?
No.
So, let me say this. I think you need to keep that separate from what we're trying to accomplish as far as getting a kiosk down there and start charging people. And get the kiosk in place, set your fee, get your resolution in place, and address this commercial aspect separately, because that could, that could require another ordinance.
That most likely would, and we've, of course, uh, you know, are going through some of the commercial issues and, and a lot of decisions to be made at Blue Run Park. That could become complicated very quickly because there are a lot of decisions to make.
Now, that being said.
Yeah, there, there are, you know, there are some models that are out there. Citrus County may have a good model that might work for the city, but it's also something that, that could get more complicated and take some time in discussion. So, you know, I, I think that that's one that, that could turn into a couple of month project, depending on how fast council moves through it and whether you liked what you saw in Citrus County. But if we're starting from scratch and really having to consider that, we went through a lot with Blue Run and that took a very long time.
Okay, so, I'll talk to Safe Park, get a draft agreement, prepare a resolution for a $10 daily launch fee with a residential pass, annual pass for $50?
I'd say $40 or $50.
$40 or what?
You'd want, I mean, $50 is fine. Because like you say, if they come every day, it's a lot.
It is pennies, but I, I have to defer to you.
I know.
I don't, you know.
I think $50 is a reasonable number. I mean, there's a lot of upkeep to be done there. And we're trying to make to turn this into some kind of a user fee, I guess.
Okay.
To maintain it.
Okay, and then this, it would be part of the revenue that we'd be sharing with, um, Safe Park anyway. Because they can program the kiosk.
Mm-hmm.
Or passes, or a daily fee. So, if 50, we, we would net $25.
I don't know how you could do that at the kiosk, because you would have to prove residency. I don't, I don't think that would be a, they could
come in here, I'll have to talk to, to Safe Park about it. But they could come in here, it would have to be during, you know, initially during our hours. And prove residency, and maybe there's something that we help them with.
Is it, I mean, you could design a sticker.
Right.
Or on their vehicle.
Because I see this the same as the, uh, as the, uh, the kayak vendors. We're not using their kiosk. Um, like you said, Jan, we just create a sticker that they would put on their windshield and.
I don't know if this would work, but, but this is the way it is with Citrus County. You can pay for your annual pass as a resident.
Mm-hmm.
But then within three days, you have to mail, they, they give you an email address, they send you an email and say, you have to provide us with like an electric bill or something of that nature to prove your residency.
Otherwise, it goes.
Otherwise, they cancel you.
Okay.
Um, so, you can talk to Safe Park and see if that might be an option.
Why would we want to include Safe Park? And where I'm at going with this is, we're not using their kiosk, we're not using their equipment. It's no different, I mean, I don't see any difference between kayak, the kayak vendor agreement we're, we're talking about. Um, a person would come in here, uh, somebody's going to have a bunch of stickers in their desk and they're going to have to bring in, uh, proof, you know, whatever you decide the proof is going to be.
Driver's license.
Right.
Why, why not? If Safe Park can handle this, why not let it go through Safe Park?
We'll lose 50% of that revenue.
Oh, we would anyway for an annual pass.
Why?
I mean, I would think so, because that's really how they're making their payment, is through, it would be.
How is this different than the, right, but the kiosk is, if they have an annual sticker on their car or their truck, um, they're not ever going to touch the kiosk. They're never going to look at a kiosk, they're simply going to go, they're going to launch their boat. Uh, the chief's people are going to come through, they're going to take a look, they're going to see that sticker, everybody's good. Um, and there's no involvement with, uh, Safe Park whatsoever. It would simply be, uh, and there's not going to be that many people, you know, I don't, 25 people maybe a year, who knows, even if it's a little bit more than that of, of local folks.
If they go down there on a weekend, they go down there on a Saturday and they don't want to pay the $10, they want to go ahead and get their annual.
They wouldn't be able to.
Pay for their annual pass, they wouldn't be able to do that. But they could pay their $10 and then they know.
Absolutely.
They can't get an annual pass.
Might entice them, right, yeah, right.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, so, the Safe Park gets $10 fee via kiosk, period.
Correct.
Okay. The re, a resolution would be a $10 fee, daily fee.
Mm-hmm.
Or an annual pa, a pass residential only.
Correct.
Okay.
For $50?
For $50.
Uh, do we want it now?
And we don't have to put in the resolution how that's going to be collected. We just need to, we just need to do that internally.
No, for the folks that are outside city limits, there's quite a few of those that we want to entertain, uh, annual them, okay.
Keep it simple. Okay, so, I've got some marching orders and then at a later date, we'll talk about agreements with commercial vendors.
Okay, that's correct.
That sounds good. All right. We got it, Jan?
I think so.
All right, let's go on to the next.
If I don't, I'll find out April.
We'll ring it up on Wednesday, we're here. All right, discussion, me. Council recommendations, reduce the length of time. Don't get hung up. I made, and I'll repeat this, I made a few recommendations, we're all shot now, that y'all didn't like. So, I ask y'all to please think about other, rather, recommendations to shorten the length of these meetings. Do y'all want to put that off till we have a full council? Pretty important to talk about it now, or what?
Let's wait till we have a full council.
Yeah, that'll shorten this meeting.
I have nothing to myself, so.
Okay, all right. Uh, let's just put it off till everybody's here. All right. The next thing I put down was Blue Run Park, um, and swimming. Um, I got a couple of folks sent me some things about swimming at Blue Run Park. I've learned a lot about the history of that. Andrew and I talked a little bit about it today. Um, how do I start? Um, I personally wish we had never allowed Blue Run Park. And my thought was, I mean, if people want to swim in the river, they can go to KP hole or they can go to City Beach. We have two places on this river, they can swim. By allowing people to swim at Blue Run Park, to me, has opened up a pretty much traffic jam for people getting out of the water with tubes and kayaks, trying to get out of the river, get on a bus, go somewhere else. Versus the people who are staying in the water and won't get out of the way. And I got a number of people that talked to me about some fistfights that have gone on and some other issues. I don't think that's rampant, but apparently there has been some little confrontation. Um, but I'm afraid, I just don't know how we back up now. I mean, it's like the city has done this. And I personally don't agree with it, but I'm not sure how we can stop it. I mean, it's kind of like cats out of the bag and we're, we allowed them this last year to swim there. They learned they can swim there. I don't, just don't know how we can stop it. I mean, we go up, like Andrew said, we can go up and put a sign up, but I don't think we could legally give them a ticket or anything else, because we run into all kinds of problems with this being a river. The river basically is, is basically controlled by the state of Florida. It's not even controlled by us, even though it runs through our town. And like Andrew had pointed out, they're standing in the water and they're not on the land saying waste the water. We can't make a move now that we've allowed them to go in there and swim. So, I'm open to any thoughts on this. I don't, I wish we hadn't done it. I'm just not sure how we can monitor it or change it now. I'm, I'm more concerned about is, right now, it's a big problem, but I have heard some few altercations. It was mainly people with kayaks getting out, pushing a child out of the way and then their parents come down there and they get in a fistfight with a guy with a kayak, okay? So, we got to be careful. I mean, that's all I can say. And just, I think we have to monitor in this situation and hopefully it doesn't get worse, but I don't have any thoughts on how we can stop it now.
What, Jan?
Well, one of the problems is, um, what we see there during the summer is people park their boats literally yards away from the ramp. We need to have, I, if we can't keep people from swimming, I mean, let's say you're waiting for the shuttle and you want to get back in the water to cool off, fine, swim around. But when we have people parking their boats there and they're using it as a, you know, as a diving platform, that needs to stop. That, that's, it's ridiculous. Um, we could place signs there, just like the, uh, state has done. Uh, going up north, back toward the head springs, it says, no boat anchoring here. Do that. That might help at least keep the boats out of there. I've gone by in the summer to see three, four boats parked right there in the river. And we have a marine patrol park, put the, place the signs here that says, no anchoring here, no park, do not park boat here, whatever. That, that would at, at least prevent one or two accidents perhaps. Because remember, we have personal watercraft, we have the, the motorboats and we have people in tubes and we have people on, uh, stand-up paddle boards and kayaks. It's a mess.
Oh, and you got the bridge right there.
And the bridge right there.
They're going to see the other one.
Yep.
This is a mess.
It's a mess.
But, well, maybe we, maybe we page for some signs and put them out there and say, don't swim and see what happens.
Yep.
And people that happen, don't live here, don't come here often, will buy about that.
The other thing is, people would come, park and just swim. They're taking up, we know that parking lot cannot, cannot accommodate the number of people.
Right.
By 9:00 AM, there's not a, there's not a spot there.
Correct.
Right.
Where I'm at with it is, uh, one, the way it is right now with all the confront, with the confrontations, it just adds burden to the police. Every time there's a confrontation, something goes on, they got to go deal with it. Um, it's only a matter of time before somebody is hurt, because the swimming hole turns into also, like you said, Jan, a place for people, uh, to park their boats and go swimming and they can get out, do whatever they want to do. It's only a matter of time before somebody gets hurt with that. Um, we're not even in the season yet and this is going on, so this is only going to get dramatically worse when summer gets here. I'm not sure why we can't revise the ordinance. We put the ordinance, okay, we simply removed, we did the ordinance, we simply removed the no swimming at one point. I'm not sure why we can't revise the ordinance and put no swimming back in. And then, that will give the police teeth to go down there. And a lot of times, you know who's just swimming, they're not just in the water, they're out there with their gear and everything, their coolers up on the deck, up on the shore next to it, and all of that. So I understand we can't do anything about people that are actually in the water, but you're gonna go, what I think people are gonna find is you go down there, a whole bunch of them are just scattered on, on the takeout area with their belongings and everything, so it's very evident that they did not show up in a kayak or a tube. The other thing I'm thinking is, is maybe make up some signage. I'm not sure what we can stick in the water as far as signage, like with the State Park has, because it's not our river.
I think you can place them on the bank, but if you post them in the water, then you have to work with the state.
Right, right, so I'm agreeable to that, that makes sense, but I also wonder if we can't put, you know, here's the, we got the rules signed up, I think now, and one of the rules are no swimming, and something to the extent of no trespassing. If you're not here to take, put a kayak in, take a kayak out, remove a tube, then you're trespassing. But I think the only way we're gonna be able to do anything is to revise the ordinance.
Well, I think it's, and the vice mayor touched on the fact of the sovereignty of the land underneath the water. And so essentially that ends the state's domain. So, no swimming, you know, it becomes more of a regulation for no entry for the purpose of swimming, or no entry without some sort of flotation device, whether that's, you know, a vessel, kayak, or, or some sort of a tube or something along those lines. But really technically, there's very little differentiation between swimming and tubing, per se. The best way to go about it, if you wanna look at it that way, and of course, it was very, very simple before, no swimming, but that doesn't mean that was technically enforceable. Until recently, the city take, you know, various sort of actions deciding to enforce this, and now that the city's undertaken enforceable actions, and it's a tick of all of that, there's a little bit extra homework to do. The best way to go about it may just simply be to contact the state and to look at, you know, describe the issues that they're having, because they may very well be the regulatory body or can point the city in the right direction as to what options may be, because those are sovereign waters, and that is activity within sovereign water. And like I said, the issue becomes getting into water as an entry point, and they may have stance on that. Because if somebody's just swimming and freestyling down the river because they like swimming, and they're in that vicinity, there's nothing that can be done. But different than stepping into the water to swim, but then we have that other issue of waders, bathers. When does it become swimming, is it a kid then committing crime, per se, by crossing that mean high water line, getting in the water?
So are we back to the property is ours, okay, are we back to no trespassing? Well, I don't mean just plain no trespassing, but some kind of verdict or something that, you know, this is what this is used for, and.
I mean, you certainly regulate what the ramp is used for, and I believe that also.
That's what we're trying to do, yeah, the waters themselves, the water is not the issue, it's, it's the ramp is the issue, that's, that's where they're coming from.
If you have swimmers who are using the ramp to enter the water, then I think you can differentiate that and develop that as an entry point, and say that you can't use the ramp for that, it's meant for boaters.
And that's where I think we're really looking for, correct? I mean, it'd be a drastic improvement, because they're not coming from the river to the ramp, they're coming from the ramp to the river, which is clogging up the ramp.
I thought they said, you know, I used kayak or river, they should get out. They're saying now, they were used, they said it's just too many people swimming, they can't get out. I guess they could come down to, down here to the bridge behind City Hall and get out of that on the river.
Right, that's not the purpose of that part.
Yeah, I mean, but like they said, for them to use the river or kayak and get out at Blue Run Park, it's not worth it. They're just not gonna come in. And that's what some people don't. So, again, I, I think you hit on something, maybe there's something we can say, look, this ramp is an exit ramp only. It is not an entrance ramp to the river. Of course, then you got a kayak going in.
Right, no, but it is, it's both, I believe it's both, okay, but it's not for just plain pedestrian use, and it's not for, I mean, somehow we can come up with some kind of language, I would think.
If I may, in the resolution from two thousand fifteen, it wasn't one of the park rules, it was a, it was actually in the resolution as a river access ramp rule. And it says specifically, and this wasn't enforceable because this was a resolution, but it said swimming is not allowed from the river access ramp. Doesn't say swimming is not allowed, it said swimming is not allowed from the access ramp. So, maybe something similar to that.
Exactly, that's what I was proposing, some sort of use restriction based purely on usage of the ramp.
Exactly.
It's been a while since I've been down there, so there's other points where folks can get in the water, but if limiting use of the ramp for certain users will solve a problem, then that is much more doable than trying to enforce, you know, the entire mean high water line.
In my opinion, that is the problem, is the way the ramp's getting used. Exactly, and it can't just be swimming, because, you know, the police are gonna go by, and whoever's gonna be standing on the ramp, I'm not swimming, what are you talking to me about? So it's gonna have to be some kind of, you know, unless they're using the ramp for purposes of the ramp, which is to ingress and egress kayaks and tubes, then.
That we can work with.
So how do we move forward?
We can take a look at amending, that would be an amendment, I can work with the chief and look at the situation there, get some photos and see how that could be best crafted. I don't believe it would require, off the top of my head, we'd just have to double check, but I don't believe that would require an amendment to the plan with FCT. I think that could just be something the city regulates on, but I just have to refresh myself on that.
Okay.
Ultimately, that would be something that would be in an ordinance to make it enforceable, where someone could be ticketed if they were doing something, you know, they shouldn't be doing out there.
Okay, is there, should this go on Wednesday's agenda or not enough time, should I get?
Not enough time.
Okay, gotcha, okay, so, next workshop?
Yeah, April workshop, go ahead, workshop's gonna be long. I think those are good thoughts, move on. Mr. Inskey, administrative procedures.
I already irritated everybody during the. Okay, you going from Andy's, what Andy captured from our meeting, number one is help staff understand goals and direction. I think that's an ongoing one. Develop project checklist, checklist for all projects that's been completed. And I'm not sure who's reviewed it, who's not reviewed it. I'd like to explain my intent with that, and that is actually for, to somehow make that into some kind of, I'll say logs, lack of a better term, that before staff presents a plan, those items have to be filled in. Also, before council members can vote on a project like that, those have to be filled in. So, what I'm worried about is maybe we all get on board, and y'all are on board with this council as far as what we're looking for, for a plan, but in future councils, you know, I'd hate to see we go revert back to where we're simply showing a part slide, and there's no, there's no logistics behind anything else. You know, and I use the downtown light situation, it started out at twenty-six thousand dollars. It went somewhere around the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars, and asked about the electric over, you know, I wasn't up here at the time, but we were told all those are not gonna be significant costs. You know, find out they're extremely significant costs. And what I would like to see not happen in the future is, in the past, due to lack of structure, lack of a better term, we wasted millions of taxpayer dollars that could have went towards the roads, lowering taxes, wage increases for the employees. You know, and I'll just start with the list, we got eleven K shed, eleven K lost on a shade shelter, all the stuff that went on with the church. The green light project that put us four million in debt, that we're still paying off a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the next ten years. This one's gonna stain, we just threw away six thousand dollars in software. So, I think we're not very, we're not vetting out, well, we have to keep going on there. So, so the intent is, is to turn this into something that everybody has to use now and in the future to let these kinds of things not happen. I'm not sure how we move forward with that.
Andrew, could that, do you think a resolution would be appropriate for that? Establish a procedure for?
It's administrative, I think a resolution would work for that, if you're talking about how a decision's made and how it's gonna go through, that would be the most appropriate. Sure, it also allows flexibility where it wouldn't require first and second reading to go through it, or a city policy. But you could also adopt a policy via resolution.
Man, you kinda like the grant policy.
Right, that's what I was thinking, because we have a procedure, a resolution that establishes the procedures for grant applications. So, I think that could be accomplished via resolution, which would be fairly simple.
Okay, and what, kinda I guess, I mean, April got pretty full here pretty quick, and there's no dire need for this now. And like everybody's input on this, could we attach it to like a May workshop? Okay, to work out the bugs and what I sent, and.
In fact, I read over it, and I, I've read it a couple times, and I thought it was very good. I don't know if we tweaked it, but I mean, I liked the whole concept of.
Right.
Making sure you haven't forgotten, so.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so we'll deal with that on the May workshop, work, get everybody's input, work out any bugs.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
This really wouldn't come into play when the budget is being prepared, correct? It's like say, that comes with a road project. I wanna repave Cedar Street.
Mm-hmm.
Cedar Avenue, whatever it is. The details wouldn't necessarily be available at that point, just an approximate cost, or whatever research he may have done.
Correct.
Then, when the project, when he's really planning the project, is when this would come into play.
Correct.
Before you would say move forward with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hundred thousand, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, right. Okay, then, I'll take the next one, too. The five-day work week versus four-day work week. I think everybody has read the, read the results of the questions that Andy sent out of everything. I myself understand everybody's issues, and I went through this kind of in the budget meeting. With the four-day work week, I tried to come up with a list of of cons for working a four-day work week. And I want them to be objective and substantial, because we're gonna be upsetting some people's world. And to be perfectly frank, I can only come up with one thing, and that, and that's the holiday hours that are charged. And I think we can figure something out with that, we can work something out. Because basically, right now, you know, use two thousand twenty-three holidays, the actual days they fall in, and the way holidays work for the employee manual. And for two thousand twenty-three, there's, with the four-day work week, there are ninety hours worth of holiday hours that are gonna be billed. With a five-day work week, there would only be eight hours that would be billed, or productive, I should say. And so what that comes down to is a loss of ten hours, ten production hours per person for the thirteen full-time general employees, that's the only people it's applicable to. The cost of that lost production is three thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars, you know, plus a hundred and thirty hours of lost production amongst the thirteen. So I think we can find a way to get, you know, to work that out. I'd like to see us work that out somehow. And I can't come up with anything substantial for not staying on a four-day work week, unless I'm not thinking of something somebody else has. When I think about the end. I can't think of anything substantial enough to revert back to a five-day work week, maybe that'd be better, we understand.
I just wanna make sure.
Right, right, right. You know, and I was one that was adamant that we were gonna go back to a five-day work week.
I was.
And so, but I crunch numbers, I had to sit down, and I had to really go through and try to put a list together with everything that, you know, I was thinking before we were voted up here in these positions. And, and I come up with things like, okay, maybe inconvenient for some people to not have the building open on Friday. But that kinda washes out for some people that find it convenient to have the early hours during the day for the four days during the week. The, since we went to this work schedule, this four-day work schedule in two thousand nineteen, every employee that is hired on since two thousand nineteen hired on knowing that it was gonna be a four-day work week. And that's how they calculated their world. So I'm gonna go back to the same thing that I said during the budget meeting, is that these folks took a look at this job, and they said, okay, the wage is not, maybe I have to get a better wage somewhere else, but with a four-day work week and the time off benefits that this particular job gives, I can balance all that out, go work a second job, go do a business that I wanna come up with something to get, make up for the income if they need to. And that's what they took these positions based on. I think there's only maybe three people that hired on before, well, maybe four, before two thousand nineteen. And, y'all getting old. So, if.
I think we need to come to a resolution on this.
Ten hours that are lost, and we can work, you know, there are many ways that we can work that out. And I would just hate to, for, I can't come up with a valid reason, somebody else has a valid reason that I haven't thought of to go to the five-day, I can't see upsetting people's lives, especially when they're working second jobs, whatever, whatever. And lose some of the good people that we have acquired since two thousand nineteen. And since two thousand nineteen, these good people have also developed the skills, the skills that they need to work here, the familiarity with, with their jobs that they have to do, et cetera. And it just doesn't, I can't find a reason to upset that half a part.
I only have one comment on that, is the hours you calculated, if we could look at the clock right now, it's seven-thirty. How many times have we been here before you guys joined us? Eight, eight-thirty at night, eight forty-five, nobody's counting those hours overtime for our staff either.
No, no, I, I count them.
I count them.
I did it, I stared at the clock during the meeting, because I want this to be over.
Right, right, absolutely.
You kept my message.
No, no, I, I get it, I mean, we're paying these people who sit here, and it's overtime or time off.
Or overtime.
And I'm like, I'm staring at this clock, because I want it to be over. And it's not that we, I mean, we're gonna cover the infrastructure, we're not gonna skip any of it. But I do start adding up in my mind, like Tim does, how much is this costing for everybody to sit here and have these meetings? And if we can get everything done and shortened, that's what we need to do.
Correct.
Now can I comment about?
Absolutely.
Okay. Like you, when I first looked at this, I was like, we need to go back to five-day work. Okay. Having read through these various questionnaires and understanding how many of our staff have second jobs, it's over half of. And, and that to me is very important. Again, they've structured their lives around, okay, I have four days here, go work somewhere else and make some more money so I can support this wonderful economy we have. That said, I'm definitely have gone back to a four-day work week, I see nothing wrong with it. But what I would like to see, and maybe I'm, I'm reading something into this, but a lot of people said the reason they like four-day work weeks is because they go to the doctor or the dentist, schedule appointments on Friday. And that's great. But I also see people taking off during the week. Because I've asked when I'm down here, where's this person, they, well, they gotta go to the doctor, they gotta do this. Now, I know you can't do a hundred percent of the time on Friday. Hey, I see more doctors than you shake a stick at, but, so I understand that. The other thing that I wanna make sure we're doing, these doors open at seven in the morning and they're open till six at night. And that's 11 hours. The people working 10-hour days. Well, I expect everybody to be here at seven in the morning and everybody to leave here at six at night. And what they do during lunch or anything else, that's fine. But four days a week, I expect everybody to be here, cause we really haven't cross-trained everybody to do everybody else's job, because we just don't have a staff. I mean, I get that. So when I come in and see an empty desk, I question myself without saying anything, you know, where are they, what are they doing, this kinda stuff. So I do think we need to make sure that our staff understands they need to be here a full day, four days. That's just. But I'm totally against going to five-day work week. I just, the more I thought through it, I'm like you, there, there's a slight benefit, but it's just not working.
Now, uh, add on to, uh, what you said about the four days, the other thing that I struggled with was, um, I know people are taking, uh, Thursday as a vacation day or whatever, um, you know, to, uh, make a four-day work week. But again, I just read off in the, uh, in the budget meeting, how many weeks and, um, days folks have off, and that's the way this job, this business plan, this job is structured, is the pay may not be the best out there in the world, but the time off is grand. And knowing, it's hard for me to get my mind wrapped around, uh, you know, we're gonna do this, we wanna do this, we wanna do this, okay. Bottom line is, uh, the time off is reality, that is what, um, that is what takes place. They have to take it off sometime. So if this, uh, if they're taking off a Thursday to make a four-day, um, weekend, then, uh, again, they gotta take it off sometime and they have a lot of time that they have to time off, that they have to use up. So I think it's imperative for us up here to understand that that is our limitations of what's gonna be done. We cannot give them a workload that does not account for the days off that they have and expect, um, you know, the, you know, the other way is we wanna make a lot of money and have very little time off. But that's not what we're dealing with. So we have to play with the cards that we have. And, uh, I guess enough said for me.
Let's keep going.
Okay, keep it moving. All right, I think, I think it's a five-day work.
But do we need to?
Day four.
Absolutely.
Just for the record, the four-day work took effect, um, October 1 of 2018. Was it 2019? Cause we've been doing it since 2018. And to your point, Wally, because you had mentioned that to me earlier, um, and I, and I did respond and give you some examples, but I, I know from personal experience, um, and I know, you know, pretty much what goes on with the staff when they're asking for time off, what it's for and that sort of thing. I might not always be able to disclose that, um, especially if it's, if it's medically related. But I've had occasions where I've called my doctor and said, can I get in on Friday? Well, we don't have anything on Friday. We don't have anything on a Friday for the next three weeks. Well, I can't wait three weeks to get into the doctor for, you know, so there's gonna be times when you're gonna come in and somebody's gonna, you know, could be gone to a doctor's appointment, because sometimes you have to get in sooner than later and you can't wait. You gotta take whatever is available.
I get it, and I don't see, it's not like when I see a person missing, it's not like, well, half the staff, it's not, that's not what it is. I'm just saying, I know everybody tries. I know I go to the doctor two or three times a week. I'm so tired of going to the doctor, I don't, but, see, and I do know, you, when you have a problem, you wanna sit down. And I don't want anybody not to do that. And you got sick, lady, use it. And that's just the way I look at it.
Right.
Again, if I saw it, cause a lot of people doing this, I would be more concerned, I'm really not. I just wanna make sure I was working every day.
Now, to add to it, for the employee manual, sick days are supposed to be used for doctor appointments, et cetera, not, uh, comp time, not et cetera, et cetera. Where I'm going to is, uh, the saving up of sick days for a golden parachute at the end. So, you know?
Right, if, if you call in sick, you have to use your sick time.
If you go to a doctor and you take the day off, you have to use sick time for the manual. Okay. I'm done with administrative stuff for this meeting.
All right, let's see how fast we use the reservation. I'm gonna take this one down. We'll miss some, we'll skip some. I gotta use it. All right.
Number 15.
15, review council goes in silence.
I'll start.
Okay.
This parks and recreation has spent, uh, several hours with Matt and Troy on the day that Troy left. I had a list, I'm gonna type it up and I'll give you all a copy at our meeting so we can expedite this meeting. Largely, there, there's so, so much of our parks, the amenities in them are in disrepair. I'm just gonna tell you that our playgrounds are in really bad shape. The fall area under the playground apparatus, really bad shape, that's liability issue. And the other is, um, need more, um, shade trees in our parks. Shrubs along the fences, azaleas grow very fast, for example. And the other is, um, I'll type it up and send it to you, or give it to you.
Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
Take care. All right. You wanna do yours, you want me to do mine, or?
I could go either way.
You go ahead.
Okay, uh.
What did this we covered tonight?
Uh, went to the TPO meeting for the multimodal, uh, uh, project. Basically, it's in, in the, uh, in the engineering phase, the engineering phase is due to be complete in Sep- September. What I'm confused on is what's the next step once the engineering phase is complete? You know, what point do we actually get to construction on the multi- multimodal? So, um, I'll work, uh, with, uh, whoever and figure that out. The, uh, went to the FDOT meeting for the 41, um, 41 road work that is, uh, getting ready to take place. Uh, I thought they give a, they gave a good, uh, presentation, uh, great maps to show exactly what they're doing. A wonderful thing that actually came out of this meeting is the engineer, the engineering firm person that is doing the engineering for 41 road project heard us talking, I think maybe, maybe Andy talking about, um, the 484 project. And the engineer was just sitting there, he's listening to us, and he goes, whoa, 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 wait a minute. So what's, what's that? He said is, they heard that there was gonna be a 484 project. Okay, but they did not know the details. And when we laid out rough details for him, what he recognized is where the 484 project ends at Mary Street, okay? The 41 project is just gonna take care of that right-hand turn, uh, thing where they're gonna end up putting three lanes in, it's gonna be a right-hand turn lane, the island's gonna be gone, there's gonna be a center lane that goes forward, and there's gonna be a left-hand turn lane. So there's three lanes right there. Well, their three lanes do not meet up with the lanes on 484. So, right, so we're building a railroad from the east coast to, and sorry, one from the west coast, but they're gonna miss each other. And so Manny took notes that she was gonna get with, uh, uh, the proper people so that they would talk to each other and figure that engineering phase out. Was you able to get any numbers or anything, Manny, for that?
I got, um, the engineer that was here for FDOT.
Right.
Got his card.
Right.
Put him in touch with Alan.
Okay, great, okay. If I had any trouble with that, huh? Cause, uh, enough there.
The other, can I stop you right there?
Absolutely.
The other thing on that 41 project that I know came out of that meeting, that hit me was one, all construction on that road will be done tonight, which I thought was wonderful. We don't have this problem like we have the other day sheet. Look out there at eight o'clock and all roads blocked, cause nobody's gonna work. Or they said they would not start until dark and they were in before it got, like, something. That's what they said, let's see. Let's see if they follow through on that. The other thing is, when we were discussing, when I heard y'all talking about that and the three lanes and all that and this, I think it was Roger, you and I started talking to him about the turn lane on 41 going into 484 was always backed up past Dinkins. And he said, well, we can fix that, we just make that turn lane about 300 foot longer. I said, it's 100 foot long. So, I mean, they're gonna try to address that too.
Awesome, okay, gotcha.
You know, I, I did think they were great, they, they're knowledgeable and they listened to what we had to say. And they said, you know, we can keep adjusting this right on time, sort of, I thought.
Cool. Uh, the other thing is working with Matt on, uh, his daily issues, taking a look at, uh, his issues with, uh, prepping, uh, get ready for more season, et cetera, et cetera. And Matt and I are gonna get together tomorrow to see if, uh, anything we can do to help keep him forward. And that's all I have, thank you.
Like I said, things I wanna talk about was the budget, uh, which we covered extensively. Oh, the one thing we'll say, um, I have been working kind of behind the scenes on the short-term rental ordinance. As I've mentioned to y'all, I don't wanna bring it up, we have a full council, that we do a workshop and cover the whole thing. But I'm getting cost, what it's gonna cost to have these inspections done by the fire folks and the building code folks, and I'm building a file with all that information. So when we do get a full council back, that we can jump into this and get it fixed. To me, this is one of those things, we just gotta get fixed. That's the only one I got. Okay.
Uh, Wally, I'm sorry, but I do have one more thing.
Oh.
You mentioned behind the scenes, uh, when Troy was still here, was working with, uh, Alan and Troy for the, uh, Granada Road Project. And we walked down, uh, the intersections and where all the work was gonna be done. There were two other intersections that were in, uh, horrible, uh, condition. And it's the one that comes out of, uh, the exit from City Beach where it runs into Maple Street and then where the, the five-way, uh, where the Granada meets the other four roads. Um, those intersections are destroyed. So, uh, asked Alan if he would send us, if he would, uh, uh, send us a quote for, um, what it would take for the engineering side, cause that's what they're working on right now, uh, to add those two intersections in. And, um, he was expecting at any time, this was Thursday, I think I was talking to him, called him up this morning and he just emailed it to us just before this meeting. So to add, uh, and he sent this to Manny, um, to, uh, add these two intersections is roughly $16,000. We're in the area, we're already repairing the whole minis- ministrus area, it doesn't make sense to me to skip these two that are messed up. But that would have to come up for a, a vote to, uh, uh, to add these two intersections to it.
Okay.
So we kinda, we need to keep Alan moving.
Because like, I know you talked to Troy and I talked to Troy, and he said, you know, when you're in there designing all this stuff, if you see something, go ahead and get it designed, even if you don't have the money to do it.
Right.
And then you've already got it.
Right.
That's part of the yard project?
Yes, ma'am.
So it was an additional $15,800?
Correct.
I think to, um, to add the engineering for that, for those intersections and, um, anyway, um, yeah, so since, since, um, Julianne isn't here, do y'all wanna put that, this on the regular agenda, um, for discussion?
Uh, I think we need to keep it moving only because, uh, we don't wanna be holding, uh, we don't wanna be holding, uh,
I would put it on the, again, when we started making, we just need to point that out to her. I'm sure she'll read over it. If she don't like it, not one of them, she pulls them out, so.
Okay, so put it on the consent.
Yeah, let's just, okay. If you're okay with it, Jan. Okay? Well, we got three of those, so. She goes, no, she don't got it. All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, department head report.
What, uh, what, I had one thing put on the agenda, which was pretty much already handled for the professional planning services. Just to give you, uh, and you all have gotten a copy of that agreement with the planner, Michael, that was here, Mike, from LPG. It's just, I had to, according to our code, once we enter, you know, I signed that agreement, I have to buy our code.
Right.
But you all noticed that, that, that's what I did. And so now you know. You all have copies of the agreement.
You got it?
So from here, what we'll do is work on getting RFP put together, because we can't do this long-term without, um, doing requests for proposals and taking those from other light firms and then council deciding who they wanna use for these services. So it is temporary and, uh, we will be hopefully getting that to you within the next month or so. The other thing was Boomtown Days, their application came in after our, well, actually it came in just a couple of days prior to agenda publication, but I didn't get it from Community Development and time to get it on the agenda. So, um, Monday, we need to put the alcohol waiver on the agenda for Boomtown, um, because we won't have another meeting before then. April 15th.
Oh, okay.
So our, no, I guess we would have another meeting. We'd have April 12th. But if it's okay, we could go ahead and, if we can get it on Monday and just go ahead and get it out of the way, that, that would give them their alcohol waiver for, um, their event. And I have a, uh, update from Kelly in Community Development. I'll just run through these real quick, since she's not here. Proposed RV park, uh, future land use element, and the cop plan says that a RV park shall be subject to specific design, design standards, and the maximum density of RV sites within a park is 12 sites per gross acre. So I guess she just wanted to make y'all aware of that, and that will be something that our planner would be looking at to make sure that those requirements from that. I'm sorry?
How big was this plan?
I'm not sure.
I, I don't remember him saying.
I'm not sure.
Like 200 and, oh, yeah, 200, that's what he, uh.
When he goes to the plan with a wooden hill, he'll have it, 200.
So Jan kinda covered this with the tie, launched the permitting requirements. Kelly has been trying to go through the cop plan, get everything together so that we can get it, um, on the website, um, and working with attorney hand to update some code conflicts that need to be addressed sooner than later. She just keeping. She just keep in mind that as they're doing this, we will be spending legal dollars. Code enforcement, they expect the need for a special magistrate hearing in May to address some properties that have not complied. So, she'll give you some work information now in April on what's coming up with that. And the only other thing I had, oh, I didn't need to open that, was that we interviewed four applicants for the Public Works manager position. I haven't had a lot of time since our last interview on last Thursday to really sit with Michelle and maybe get Ken on the phone to really thoroughly vet each one and talk about, you know, how we would rate them. And we also still have to, you know, once we decide, yeah, we're going to recommend, you know, these two out of the four for council, make a decision, we would need to come to you after we've run their background checks and everything else and make sure all that's clear. So, we'll work on doing that this week and maybe have an update for you on Wednesday next week where we are with that. I don't have anything else.
Where are we at with Dick Energy and the electric vehicle charger stations?
I've got to call them because Troy said that there was a voicemail on his phone that I guess, well, he said he thinks it might have been the project manager that had tried to call him. I do know that the original plans that they submitted, Kelly had to send them back and was, she had to have some revision to the initial set of plans, and we did get a revised set of plans last week. So, we have that. I just need to follow up with project manager and see what's going on, unless, Matt, you know something I don't.
They, they called me, they called the other day, and they called me that they're hoping to start by April.
Okay.
They're just crossing the t's and dotting the i's and said by April they would pull us something else, Ken.
Can we get a copy of those revised plans?
Jan, do you have anything more?
I think I'm all talked out.
Thank you.
Roger, we got Ken down there.
There's a goal.
Don't bring any more orgies.
Matt, do you have anything more?
Yeah, just let everybody know, I sat in with Trevor from the insurance company last week.
Who was last week?
And he said, everything in the city was looking top-notch. He threw out a couple of things, minor stuff, inspection forms for parking racks, playgrounds. He liked to see AEDs put in city facilities. So, Sharon, you know, Sharon, she was going to look into getting a grant for AEDs.
What's an AED?
The pivot laters.
Say it again.
The pivot laters.
Oh, gotcha.
And...
Do we have people that know how to operate? Do we have people that know how to operate?
It's something that tells you everything.
They have like fours.
Somebody hit the button.
Gotcha, okay.
Don't touch the patient.
Gotcha. You jump your car.
But he said everything happened, and I haven't heard anything back on it, but he said everything worked.
So, we received a Safety Excellence Initiative award, which means that we will be getting a discount on our liability insurance for that. It was part of an initiative that we did through our insurance company. That's what the meeting was all about. We actually just received the documents today. We got 100%.
Good deal.
Yes, we did.
Good deal.
It was a combined effort between Public Works and Human Resources.
Do you know what the discount is?
I'm not exactly sure what the discount is, how much of the discount that we get, but I can get you the, I can show you the award, and then they made four, I think it was either, it was between four and eight minor recommendations, but it's really because they have.
Sure, right, absolutely.
But we still got 100%.
Right.
All right. Ben, is that you?
Uh, chief?
Oh, geez, I thought you were sitting there.
I'm doing a quick line. We stopped 116 vehicles during last month, and the good news is, I don't think I've called you in a couple of weeks.
You called me.
I'm certain, but things have slowed down a little. Our marine patrol has picked up. We've made 83 stops on the river here in the last month, issued 29 citations and 54 warnings to them, and we have picked up more crash reports. We did 15 written crash reports. A lot of ours has been the drivers exchange, but that's the parking lots, accidents, and backing in. And the total calls assigned through dispatch, that was 343 calls that was assigned to us through dispatch, that's not counting the calls that our officers generate, or they may see something, hear something, and they generate the calls also. So, we had a good month the last month. Our clearance rate was 80% for all the crimes that we've had, so.
Good. I'm glad you had time today.
Yeah, and I appreciate you two coming to my meeting.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah.
Those were great. I think the public needs to see more about what we're doing.
I do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Scared to ask, but hopefully we're all talked out. Does council have any comments?
Not on it.
You good? Okay, we're through with that one. Our city attorney, do you want to comment?
Council, keeping with my two minutes or less rule, I have no comments.
All right. Yes. Okay, now, last and very important, does the public have any comments? Did anybody sign up for it?
I don't have any guys signing up, but I see a hand up.
Hello? Okay, Ms. Newton?
Kathy Gunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. Going back to the ARCO, they said, Bridget Hanley, the president, ex-president, said she turned in an application to block off Pennsylvania, West Pennsylvania, 90 days in advance. Somehow the ball got dropped. Judy Twilliger didn't go through the city, she went straight to Marion County and got it blocked off for Boomtown. So, the ball was getting dropped somehow, so we ought to tell people to go straight to Marion County, if that's what we want to do. The other thing is, I talked to Bridget about possibly moving the art show to Ernie's Park since we are doing this beautification of the park, and she said she would love to, but she feels like we need a sign on East Pennsylvania saying park that way. I totally agree. I don't know which one of you city councilmen would be the liaison for signage, simple, tasteful, park that way, also City Beach that way. So, when you do away with spending and people complain that there's no place to spend, you can say, there's City Beach that way. The other thing is, you cut down on the time of the meetings. I felt like y'all passed a resolution in December stating that you weren't going to give charitable contributions, and now I see it on our agenda, and I'm puzzled. I am very much in favor of stopping charitable contributions to anyone because I feel like it opens up Pandora's box, and also for the fact that the high school students have been, I've gone over there many times to see if I could get them the volunteers, and not one person has signed up a volunteer form. So, I just feel like, chief, if you're going to pass a resolution, don't say, well, in this case, we ought to do it the next month. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else?
Is it too late to ask? To do, to make comments? It's actually a question. I missed it on my list when I was up there because it was way up top in our date order. It's based on what Kathy just said, okay, and I meant to ask it when we were on the conversation about the high school donation. I thought we had, I know we talked about it, but speaking with Mandy, we did not pass a resolution or anything. So, can we get that put on one of the agendas? And it doesn't have to be April, I guess, because there's nothing dire, but...
You want it on that?
I thought we decided to vote on giving a contribution when Julianne is here.
Yes, we did.
That's what I wrote a note. We're going to vote on it on Wednesday.
Two different items, two different things.
This is a non-Allen conference.
Right. What we're talking about is, when we all first got seated, that we brought up charitable contributions.
They agreed.
And we agreed not to do any, but we really didn't do anything to make that official. Right.
We have a creative policy. If you want creative policy, you can do that by resolution, and we can bring you that. We can try to have it in April or...
How about...
If you don't want to put anything more on April, we can put it in May.
April seems pretty full.
The ball may.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good. Okay, any other comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in all favor?
Aye.